Let's rise for the pledge. Good evening and welcome. If there's anyone here that's wanting to speak on line 11, unscheduled audience participation, please note that we have a process for that. And so over where you could pick up the agendas is probably a card. And that card will not only be what you need to fill out and give to Angela, but on the back is also an instruction on how we operate during that time. So if you're here to speak during that time, sometime here in the next bit, go over there and pick up one of those cards and please fill that out. Attendance, please?
Yes. President Donnelly.
Present.
Vice President DeLisandro.
Here.
Secretary Schaefer.
Here.
Treasurer Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Griffith.
Here.
Trustee Foster. Absent. Trustee Hanser.
Present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thorne, are there any changes to the board agenda?
None.
Do you have before you the consent agenda? Yes, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Mary, support. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board. Student arts, athletics, and academic recognition.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Bigelow. I'm the principal at Clear Lake Elementary. I'm extremely excited this evening to introduce to you Mr. Joseph Safran. He's a fourth grader in Mrs. Peruski's class. And Mrs. Peruski actually joined us this evening, which is nice. So I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to talk about some of the great things that Joey is doing in class on a daily basis. Joey is genuinely curious about the world around him. He's inquisitive by nature. Joey likes to not only challenge himself with those around him. This fall, Joey decided to create math challenge activities for his classmates when we were studying multiplication. The class was not only eager to complete his activities, but also to create their own math challenge activities. Joey's initial action led to a chain reaction in our class. Challenging math activities were rapidly being created. Answer keys were posted all over the room. Student-initiated action was everywhere. Thank you, Joey, for being the leader that you are and for being curious about the world around you. Congratulations, Joey.
Joey, great job.
Good evening. I'm Paul McDevitt, principal at Leonard Elementary. And today, we would like to honor two of our students for some of the fantastic things they've done around our school. The first one is Claire Brucey. She's a fifth grader. And she's being recognized for her leadership and action within our school and the community. As the president of Leonard's Elementary's Student Council, Claire has brought forth ideas and contributed to change within our school. Claire creatively developed fundraising ideas to allow the student council to sponsor a family and our school-wide giving tree during the holiday season. Additionally, Claire has taken on a leadership role as member of our school's safety patrol. As a safety patrol member, Claire demonstrates the learner profiles of being principled and a communicator. She is responsible for managing large groups of students, implementing procedures to ensure safety, as well as working to assist and greet all guests that visit Leonard Elementary. As one staff member put it, Claire is a rare ray of sunshine at our school. She greets staff, parents, and students alike with a big smile and a warm greeting. It makes my day to walk into work with a greeting from her saying, "Good morning," or "Have a great day." That's Claire Brucey. Additionally, Leonard Elementary would like to recognize one of our second-grade students who is currently just getting, taking the stage right now down to performing art center for her concert. This student is Riley Parker. And Riley is a kind-hearted, enthusiastic, and creative student. At the age of six, Riley demonstrated a gift of perspective, enabling her to see beyond herself and into the needs of her classmates, especially one little boy with Down Syndrome. Upon learning this particular classmate loved "The Greatest Showman," which Riley was not familiar with, she took action, learning every nuance of the show by watching it over and over again. After mastering the sequences and the songs of the show, she organized a Leonard first-grade "Greatest Showman," enlisting her special friend as the lead actor. Riley was sure to involve all of her classmates and left nobody out who wanted to participate. She made them the other characters in the play. Riley coordinated practices during recess and brain breaks, having students practice their parts in line, all the while keeping her special friend at her side. Then, the time came to perform this first-grade "Greatest Showman." The show star was Riley's special friend. She supported him through his role with patience, love, guidance, and understanding. The show was an amazing success. Her actions celebrate true friendship, inclusion, and the love and acceptance that comes from the heart. And that's Riley Parker.
Good evening. Turn me off.
Yeah, kicks out at all.
Okay. I'm Kristen Guena, the principal at Lakeville Elementary School. Tonight, I'm super excited and I'm super honored to be with you to introduce two amazing Lakeville students. I have Mira Call with me and I have Landon Sanders. This year at Lakeville, we've embraced the motto, "Be the I in kind." Our PSC has made this an amazing display in our school, and students are taking action by nominating one another for acts of being kind. These two have been exceptional. Mira is a first-grade student in Ms. McDonough's class. Mira always goes above and beyond on a daily basis to be kind and caring to all. She makes a point to make sure that everyone is included. Landon is a third-grade student in Mrs. Ailish's class. Recently, a new student joined the classroom. Landon, without even being prompted, he went above and beyond, out of his way, to teach our new student what he needed to know about informational writing. In addition, Landon also made sure that this student was included always on the playground. So please know that these two students inspire us on a daily basis to do the right thing and to spread kindness to all. Thank you, Mira. And thank you, Lakeville. And I'd also like to take a moment for an enormous thank you to the parents, guardians, and the families of these two kiddos because your amazing energy extends into the classroom, into Lakeville. Thank you for being such positive role models. Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Great job.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm the principal of Oxford Elementary School. And I brought two students with me today who are representing a bigger group. Mrs. Viviano's fifth-grade class for World Kindness Day decided to share that kindness with our whole building. What they did is they purchased water and pot and snacks for all of the teachers. And on one of those kind of tough days this time of year, just a couple weeks ago, as everybody's getting a little tired and could use that little bit of a boost, the students went around and visited every adult in the building and delivered the goodies for us. In addition to giving us a snack to enjoy for that day, the kids all wrote personal notes to an individual adult who'd made a difference in their world and delivered that note to the staff members as well. Mrs. Viviano's class chose two students to sort of represent their whole group. And so with me tonight, I have Reagan and Dylan. Dylan, I guess I can't take full credit for, I just learned from Ms. Gibson-Marshall that he is a Lakeville student for most of his career, but we're going to claim Dylan right now as our own for this fifth grade year as well. But Dylan and Reagan were honored and selected by the students within their class to represent the whole group and to represent the whole movement. And as sort of a culminating piece of this, Mrs. Viviano's class was featured on the Twitter account for World Kindness Day for the act that they took. So they got another piece of recognition there.
Good evening. I am Deja Beasley, and I am the principal of Oxford Middle School. So the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, which guarantees and protects the women's constitutional right to vote. So in seventh-grade geography class this year, in Ms. McNeil's class, one of the assignments was to create a sticker for the "I Voted" contest. And so Ava, Tara here, along with her other classmates, created designs that were submitted to the Celebration of Women's Suffrage Movement Committee. And that was in collaboration with the Oakland County Intermediate School District, as well as the Cornerstone Community Financial Credit Union. So Ava was one of 600 submissions. If you want to take one and pass one along, these are for the four of our administrators. Ava's entry, as I said, was one of 600, and she was honored in November at an Oakland County Commissioners Meeting for being an honorable mention. And I want to just go through her artist statement, because this is not just an assignment for Ava. This was something that she took very seriously. In fact, what you have in front of you today is her second draft. So her artist statement is, "I used the colors purple, white, and green because those were the original colors for women's suffrage. The main sign is shaped as a 100 to show the 100-year anniversary of the passing of the 19th Amendment. The crowd in the foreground shows countless protesters that sought for the right to vote, for women to vote. Lastly, in the background are the words from the 19th Amendment itself. We are so proud of Ava. She maintains a 4.0 GPA and works very hard at home in her artist studio. And so I think we're going to be seeing a lot of great things from Ava in the future." This is Ava Tara. So part of the competition was going to be a $1,000 prize, which I'm sure she would have been really happy with. But also, you will see stickers throughout Oakland County during the year 2020 when you go to vote. Those were the winners that you will see. So unfortunately, it's not Ava's design, but I think she should have won. Next, I have a very familiar face to the Board of Education. This is Mr. Alex McArthur. Alex has been to, in front of the board in situations like this as a sixth grader, as a seventh grader, and as an eighth grader. And I know that that's very unusual, because we have a lot of students at Oxford Middle School that we could choose from. But in sixth grade, Alex came to you as he, as a sixth grader, made his way onto the cross-country record board. It's a huge feat. It's something that our cross-country runners really get excited about. The record board is in the gym where they take PE classes. And as a sixth grader, Alex made it on there, which was a huge accomplishment. Last year, I brought him forth again. His team was Oakland County champions, and Alex inched his way closer to the top as a seventh grader. And this fall, I am excited to let you know that we had a very competitive season, and our, our team, both boys and girls, very successful. But Alex finished the season as the number-one fastest kid ever to be at Oxford Middle School on the cross-country heat. So he is now in front of you for year number three, but now this year, he is number one. I want to talk to you a little bit about Alex and the fact that when I asked him to reflect on his season, these are the things that he talked about first to me. He said, "Our team was undefeated. And, well, at the league meet, we went 1, 2, 4, 5, 6." I said, "What else about this season, Alex?" He said, "Well, we were back-to-back Oakland County champions." And it wasn't until I pressed him a little bit harder that he verbalized that he got a PR this year. And then, he, when I gave him like a really, like a look, right? The stink-eye look. And then he said, "And I got the record." So I want to, I want to tell you that this is a leader. He is a phenomenal student. He maintains a 4.0 as well. And Oxford High School is very lucky to get him next year. So hopefully, he'll be, he'll be back in front of you again. Alex McArthur.
Well, good evening. My name is Janet Shell. I'm the principal of Oxford Virtual Academy. And we have an OSEC student here as well, so I'm going to be introducing our, our special students. I call them the "over-the-top performers." Over-the-top, get it? So for, for this fall, we have quite, this year, for some reason, we just had a lot of response. There were so many great things going on with our students. So, but I want to highlight right now, forgive me, I have to put my glasses on, where Miss Shell's eyes are. So this is Mr. AJ Weenie. AJ is an eighth-grade student, is one of the most conscientious and hard-working students attending OVA. He's an excellent student who strives to do well in all areas. He's not just concerned with getting assignments completed. He truly wants to understand his content and make, makes every effort to seek clarification when needed, completing his coursework with integrity. As well as being an excellent student, AJ is also compassionate and polite young man with a heart of gold, who is such a joy to be around. We have watched AJ mature and grow so much academically and socially at OVA, and we are pleased to be able to honor him tonight. So well done, AJ. Our next student is Stephen Tennant. Oh my goodness, Stephen's been at OVA for quite a while. Can't believe you're in 12th grade. He is kind and hard-working and respectful young man who's thrived at OVA and who needs taking courses at the high school here as well. He exhibits many fundamental characteristics of Oxford's Portrait of Graduate, most specifically. He is a wonderful communicator. He is balanced and principled. Overall, he represents the epitome of a virtual learner, and we are proud to honor him tonight. Well done. Next, Elijah Beck couldn't be here. He would be for our elementary team. He wasn't able to make it. So I'm going to skip over to Kaylee. So Ms. Kaylee Goriell. Kaylee is an exceptional ninth-grade student and is excelling in our Fusion High School program. Bit of a pilot this year, having high schoolers in our Fusion program. Kaylee is a leader in her class and is often recognized by her teachers as a hard worker and very goal-oriented. Kaylee is frequently found helping students with their online or CED coursework. She does this with a positive and encouraging manner. She wants to be challenged academically. We just can't give Kaylee enough academic work. She will be adding a seventh class in the area of science or medicine for next semester as she wants to be academically challenged. She's even willing to pay for this class, and her desire to learn and succeed is so strong. So well done, Kaylee. All right. Evelyn, Dylan. She's in grade 10, and she's new to OVA this semester. Evelyn has been an exceptional student. She is an A average in all her courses since starting the school year, which is difficult at OVA because that learning curve of getting started in online education is intense. And then she's above on gradable progress in her courses. She's very active in Zoom sessions, and that's our way that we communicate with kiddos. And that's a step for a lot of students to be so active and to advocate and be able to navigate learning platforms in a different way. So she took, really took that and ran with it, and that's been a positive for her. She communicates quickly with mentors, teachers, and counselor, and she is all-around a sweet, goal-oriented student, and we are confident she will achieve great things in the future. So well done. Okay, for OSEC. A couple of the students are going to be recognized here at the high school by Mr. Wolf and Mr. Ackerman. But I'm going to recognize one of our OSEC students, Carter Flawaki, for, for some his, he's a senior. In his situation, they're in, they're earning college credits. So Carter's an OSEC senior who's earned over 40 college credits with Rochester University and Macomb Community College over the last two and a half years, all while maintaining a 4.0 college GPA and a 4.1 high school GPA. Wow, well done. Thank you very much.
Keep shutting off. Can you use the TV? Hi. I'm Steve Wolf, and I'm here with Oxford High School students. And first, we're going to talk about our performing arts students. And so to my left here is Selena Langfeld. She is a fourth-year student in our OSEC program. She's an OSEC rock star because she has straight A's. Straight A's last year, straight A's the year before that, all the way down to, do they get A's in kindergarten? Basically, the kindergarten. But she's, she's not here for academics. Selena's here for performing arts. And so this year, the Michigan Band and Orchestra Association has named her All-State for OBO. And she actually, just as of today, was named First Chair, which means when they rank the students in the state, they, they put her at First Chair, which means she's, if not one of the best, the best oboe player in the state of Michigan right now. Incredibly impressive. She's going to go into her fifth year next year, I'm sure, do really, really well, probably end with 60-plus credits after that fifth year with an associate's degree, I would imagine. So Selena's been playing the oboe since sixth grade, the piano since second grade, and the English horn since 10th grade. She's actually a band student who was also placed into the full orchestra because she can do so much. She's a super kind and sweet young lady. She's also in the jazz band, and they meet before school starts. So she's here late. She had to cancel her oboe lessons to be here for today's recognition. So I asked her, "Wolf, why are you taking oboe lessons when you're, you're like your First Chair?" And she's like, "That's how I got here, Mr. Wolf. That's why I'm First Chair." But she juggles a lot. She's incredibly hardworking for the obvious reasons I just pointed out. I asked Selena, "What do you like most about band?" And she said, "It's the community of the band where we share each other's interests and we're, we're kind of like a family." We hear that a lot from our band students, from our orchestra students, from all of our performing arts students. So really, really proud of you, Selena. I know you've got a really, really bright future ahead of yourself. Are you ready for your?
I'm actually going to do a little.
You guys recognize who this is? Have you seen the play "Clue"? Anyone? If you have, this is Wadsworth from, am I saying it right?
Yes.
Wadsworth from, from the play "Clue." So Finn is, he's like a performing arts jack-of-all-trades, can do it all. He's in every play. He's in every musical. And he's like the lead in every single one of them for the last two or three years. He's the guy leading the show up on stage, and he did a phenomenal job just a few weeks ago at the, at the "Clue" play. He is currently enrolled in, right now, advanced acting. So he acts. He's enrolled in, takes classes in our dance conservatory program. So he's out there performing quite often. And he's also taken choir prior to this year. So he sings, he dances, he acts, he performs. But what does he want to do? He wants to be a musician. Why? Because he plays the guitar, plays the bass guitar, the piano, and the ukulele. So again, Finn can do it all, and he's a, he's a super kind young man, a really great kid to be around. You can feel his energy in the room, and that's why he does so well up on stage. You could just, you can feel his presence. He was, he was phenomenal in "Clue" a few weeks ago. So we are really, really lucky to have him. Remember that name, Finn Murray, because you're going to see or hear about him one day, that I'm pretty sure of. Congratulations, Finn. Last but not least, we have Sam Hewler. He is a senior, and Sam is here for academics. So we have performing arts students. Sam is academics. And Mr. Ackerman, in just a minute or two here, is going to share with you some, some athletes from the athletic world. Sam was named a commended scholar from College Board, which comes from the National Merit Qualifying State Test. So he takes the PSAT in the fall, then he takes the SAT in the spring, last year as a junior. And based on that score, they named him a Scholar Commended Student. His score on the SAT was a 1420. Incredibly high, incredibly high. That's like the top 3% of all kids who take that test. And it's not just the test or the number behind that. He is a straight A student, four point, I think last semester, 4.28. I didn't know it went that high, but that's his GPA. And he's not taken easy classes. He's taken AP Psych, AP Stats, AP Lit, many AP classes before this year. But what stands out most about Sam is that smile. Super nice young man. His teachers know him not from the kid who gets, who gets A's every single semester and every single class, because he's just a genuinely warm kid to be around. Really great young man, really, really likable. Are there any Spartans in the house? Okay. Sam's going to be attending Michigan State University next year. He was a shoo-in. He's been wanting to go there since he was a kid. So I know he's super excited. He's got some friends. He's going to be attending next year in East Lansing there. So we're pretty excited. He's also well-rounded, to no surprise, just like our other students here. Sam has been on the varsity soccer team for three years, and this year, he will be captain on the varsity soccer team. So does well inside the classroom and outside the classroom as well, and he's one heck of an athlete. So very, very proud to have Sam in our building, and we know he's on to a very, very bright future. So congratulations, Sam.
All right. I'm excited and honored to be able to recognize some of our student athletes tonight. These are some of the best, not only here at Oxford High School, but some of the best in the state. So standing at my left here, we have Lauren Methner and Scott Masterson. They're cross-country runners. They both finished sixth at regional and qualified at the states. So that's the best runners in the state of Michigan. And Lauren is looking at possibly going to Ferris State, Oakland University, Michigan State, or Grand Valley. And Scott's looking at possibly going to Duke to run. So we're really excited for them. And they're like little machines. If you go out to the practices or the meets, you just see them, they're miles ahead of their teammates, miles ahead of the competition. They work extremely hard at their practices and at the events they attend. And, you know, I failed to mention, they both have above a 4.0 GPA. So phenomenal job. Next up, we have our state qualifying swim team, over-air swim and dive. Coach Rank's going to talk about them, but I am going to introduce them. We have Grace Charntstrom.
Okay, so I'm Coach Rank. I'm also a math teacher here at the high school, and I've had the pleasure of coaching these five girls, all five of which qualified for the Division One State Meet. And for the first time in Oxford history, all five of them placed at the D1 State Meet. Earlier in the season, we had our first-ever county champ, Jenna Fissler, in the 200 freestyle. At the league meet, these five ladies were league champs in five individual events and two relays. Our two relays set two new OAIA white league records. All five of them were named All-League. Ashley Weltek was named Senior of the Meet. And over the course of the season, they've... they have eight school records in their names. And all five of them are scholar athletes. And Ashley Weltek, our senior, will be going and swimming at University of Illinois at Chicago next year.
But they're not done yet. That was the best part of the meeting. You didn't miss anything, I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. The front row is open. Now, if anyone would like to have a seat. We're moving on to number five. Board of Education Matters Superintendent Evaluation. The board knows this, but we just want the public to know that in the state of Michigan, if a superintendent scores high enough for three years or more in a row, he can begin to have his review, formal review, every other year. And so, we were blessed with an amazing superintendent who scored very high over three years in a row, I believe, since 2015. And so, we did not have to do a formal evaluation this last year. But we did, at his request, continue to do quarterly evaluations that were more informal. He reacted to those when there might be a concern. We would still rate him to be exceptional at what he's doing for us. And just so the public knows, starting in 2020, we will go back to doing the formal review. And we will have probably, here in just the very near future, a statement written up by our secretary that will be a physical representation of our informal review. So, thank you very much, sir. IDS Clark Construction Building Update.
Good evening. I want to start by just kind of reviewing the work that was completed in Series One in this past summer in 2019. Completed all the work in August before school started. So, just to run through, kind of recap financials, we awarded last year $8.2 million in construction. And included in that was a contingency of 7% and a 2% general conditions. After everything was completed, we are able to return $57,000 back to Series Two projects, those unused funds from the award last year. And then, we also had $47,000 of unallocated funds from Series One. So, we're able to roll both of those into Series Two for about $104,000, which is great news. We got everything completed on time and under budget. So, to review a little bit of the scope of work, we installed unit ventilators at all of the elementary schools. We installed 110 new unit ventilators, which are those boxes in the classrooms that look like refrigerators that provide heating and cooling for all the staff and students.
Air conditioning.
Air conditioning, yay! We also did rooftop units at several schools. The big rooftop unit project, which is another heating and cooling unit, was at the high school. We removed a big air handling unit and installed three new ones in order to heat and cool the high school. There were several other schools that had rooftop units. So, we did, I think, 10 rooftop unit totals. We did 60 terminal units in the high school, the ceiling spaces. So, there was about $6 million from mechanical work done. We also did a lot of ceiling and lighting replacement, carpeting at Daniel Exer and Leonard, and all new temperature controls at all the schools except the middle school, which will be done in Series Two this summer. So, here are just a few pictures of some of the work that was done. Unfortunately, a lot of it was mechanical, electrical, so it's not pretty work. But you can definitely feel the conditions when you walk in in the summer, and it's nice and cool now, so.
So, you'd like to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Becky Timberlake. I know I've been here before. I'm from Clark Construction Company. I'm the construction manager. I'm actually the senior project manager. And I'm going to introduce Karen Middleton, who is going to be the project manager on-site, full-time, for the Series Two work. So, she's actually working on the Series Two work right now.
Hey, I'm Chuck Lewis. I'm president of Integrated Design Solutions. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of what we're going to do in Series Two for the upcoming summer. As Becky walked through, this is what we did on Series One. There was always planned to continue the work in Series Two, and then there's work in Series Three. So, the first project is DA Elementary. You can see in each of these site plans, the blue is the areas of parking lots to be replaced. The red lines that you see, and I hope you can read that okay up there, is sidewalks that are being replaced. And in the playground area, we prepped that playground area with new surface and drainage in all of these elementary schools. The yellow dots that you see are going to be lighting improvements, whether they're on the building itself for added security and energy efficiency. We're replacing everything with LED lights, as well as within the parking lots. So, we'll get better, brighter, with less cost for energy in all of the parking lots that we're going to talk about. So, there's some consistency related to some of these buildings. Other improvements related to infrastructure. We continue in Series Two with trying to improve or replace those things that have reached their useful life and help us protect the investment we have, you have, as a community. I'm sorry, I used to live here, so I say that. That you have made in these buildings related to the infrastructure. So, in DA, there's a new fire alarm going in, as well as a new electrical switch. Not, again, not exciting things, but it's very fundamental to the function of the buildings. As we look at Clear Lake, again, similar-type site improvements, as well as the playground work that we're doing as well. Lakeville, although this looks like very kind of unful, nothing's happening there, there is some exterior lighting. And there is work that will happen at this elementary school in Phase Three. It's just how it's scheduled within the total body. So, there's a theme in how we bid this work, and it's out for bids right now, I should mention. The lighting, trying to package things together to get better pricing and not doing ad hoc by building, but doing them as they make sense within a scope of work, if you will. So, bidding all the lighting should get us better pricing. And consistency in the fixtures for later future improvement. Oxford Elementary, again, similar-type work to the other elementaries that I mentioned, including the fire alarm. And we start to look at window replacement... No, sorry. Window treatment placement, replacement at OE. And each of these yellow rooms will get new blinds on the exterior wall. At the middle school, those same blinds are going to be replaced in the buildings as well. The middle school is the next phase in a lot of infrastructure improvements. This is probably the biggest one in this series for infrastructure improvements and includes replacement of old and rusted sanitary and heating piping, HVAC controls, which is a big improvement in how the buildings are controlled and how they operate and how we maintain temperature in the classrooms and how we tie that to the improvements we made in Phase One. So, those controls will tie into what we did in Phase One from a building operational perspective. There's also a unit at the front office that needed to be replaced. And the chiller, which provides the cold water, right? It works through the system, provide AC, is also being replaced. That's a small three words, but a big improvement. As well as a complete fire alarm replacement and against more exterior lighting. Again, just the second floor, looking at some of the placements. At the high school, we start to do some of the interior improvements. We did obviously some work in Series One related to that big mechanical unit that feeds this whole half of the building. But in this series, we're going to do some stuff that you'll actually will see and get excited. We're replacing all of the flooring in the areas that are in pure blue on the screen. Both in the... All of the corridors on the, I guess I would call it newer side of the building, right? That was added around the street of the high school. Most of that will be a luxury vinyl tile called LET in a series of patterns and colors. But it will also be something that doesn't have to be stripped every year. The operational needs will be reduced completely, or a lot, I should say. And it'll be a very durable, durable material for those heavily trafficked corridors. As we get into the classrooms, a little bit of the noise is a concern within the classroom wings. So, we're replacing that area with new carpet and carpet tile that can be maintained and replaced. So, we should see a big improvement in how that... The buildings and the corridors look when we get done this summer. Also, is the replacement of the pool finish, refishing the tank of the pool. It's probably about, it's 15 years, I believe, or 16 years. It's kind of at that point where you have to do that maintenance work and replace it, as well as window replacements in some of the classrooms. Or blinds replacements. I'm sorry, keep on doing the windows. Don't have that budget, sorry. At the transportation building, a pretty significant improvement for this group. We are going to completely rebuild their lounge and office area and toilet rooms for all of our bus drivers that take your kids to school every day. So, that's the basic scope of work. You want to walk through the financials?
Yeah. So, the drawings have been completed. We received them from IDS. We've packaged them and put them out for bid to the public. So, those are out right now. Bids are due on December 19th, and we're planning on coming back here to Board of Education for approval on most contracts on January 7th. So, the bond dollars that we have in Series Two allocated for summer 2020 is 6.4 million, or it's almost 6.5 million. And then, there is a million dollars from sinking fund from two series that is going to be also used this summer. And then, there's some general fund budget money, too, that's going to be used for a total budget of almost $8 million this summer. Our last estimate on the drawings that IDS has done, which was at about 95% complete drawings, was just over $8 million, which is a difference of $104,000, which we're planning on using from savings from Series One. So, and just to cover ourselves, because we know that this is very close, we have put a couple of things in alternate so that if bids come in a little bit higher, that we have that wiggle room if we need to. And then, just another note, too, the general funds are not for the bond work. They're generally... We're actually, the chiller at the middle school, there's a rooftop unit at the middle school that's being replaced, some added carpeting at the high school, and some added playground work is being done this summer in addition to the bonds. So, that's what the general fund dollars are going to be used for. Are there any questions on Series One or Series Two?
Yes, Chad?
Questions? So, I noticed... Excuse me. I was expecting to see sidewalk repair at the high school, as well as the other schools. Is there a financial, logistical, tactical reason why we wouldn't have put that in?
There's two pieces to that question. Answer that question. Number one, we... The scope of work for the high school related to site improvement and parking lots and sidewalks is in Series Three, and it's funded in Series Three. So, there was no way, because of the scope of work, that we could pull it into Series Two and go forward. It's always been part of Series Three.
Yeah. So, we did see an email come through and that there is some work we can look into if, you know, if bids come in good and there's some money or using some contingency money to replace a couple of legs of concrete with our concrete contractor at the high school if needed. So, at our next meeting, we will look into that.
I know that the sidewalks are all around the property to be redone, but my biggest concern is by the stadium and the pool. It seems to be worse. If there's anything we can do in that space, I think it'd be money wise.
Yes, sir.
So, just so you know, we do have some general fund money within maintenance that we're planning on addressing some of those. We just have to be careful in that we don't spend more money just to rip it out in Series Three. And so, that's where we're trying to be careful.
Do you have follow-up?
No.
Dan?
From a construction side of it, does it make sense for us to take... And I know exactly what Chad's talking about, where it's really dipped. You're probably three, four inches dipped over by the stadium, and then it's even heated in certain areas by... Just as you go inside the stadium. From a construction standpoint, does it make sense for us to just lift that as a temporary fix as opposed to ripping it out, replacing it, and then ripping it out again?
I looked at it cost-wise. The cost is about the same. It's pretty expensive to lift the concrete out there. But I do have a plan, and I got some quotes and budgets for it. And I believe we could do some substantial improvements over there. And it's not going to be that expensive. And some of that area in there, in fact, we could probably take some of the concrete out and just put some 21 AA stone in there temporarily until you get to the bottom piece of it. But it'll make it a lot safer. So, I do have a plan for this spring. We could improve that, round gates, and everything like that.
I was only asking you straight from the bottom, sorry.
Any other comments or questions? Yes?
What playground is... What school's getting a playground and what is getting done? Because I know a lot of their PTOs have had to raise their own funds to do their own...
I think it was the two elementary schools.
Yeah. In this series, it's OES and Clear Lake.
And OES.
An OE, that's right.
OES and Clear Lake?
And the DA, too.
That's DA and OES.
Yeah, there's three.
The purple area.
Clear Lake, DA, OES.
So, what's in our documents right now is to prep those areas for the drainage and the surface. And then, the district is looking to make the improvements with equipment. Right, Sam?
Yes. Okay. One more, Kevin. I'm sorry, I missed it. But because of the nature of this construction this summer with a lot of site work and the fact that we can't see what's under the ground, we are bringing a motion tonight to ask for an increased change order threshold of $50,000. Part of that reasoning is because when we're out on-site and we have to have a testing company come and do a proof roll, for example, on a subgrade before we start paving, and they see a soft spot, they're going to make a recommendation that we cut out the bad soils and bring in new subways for that. And we'll need to do it right away so that we, you know, keep on schedule. We don't lose our trade contractors to other jobs. We can get it done. And although we hope, and we're hopeful that with all the information we know about your soils, that we don't run into this problem, that puts the safeguard in there that we can keep moving if it does get over, when it gets up. Are there any questions in regards to that?
That motion is the next thing on the agenda. So, are you finished with your formal report?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would someone like to take on the... The motion under C. Chad?
Move to approve to give authority to the superintendent and assistant superintendent of Business and Operations to approve change orders in construction, equipment, or technology contracts up to $50,000. Anything over $50,000 would require a presentation and authorization from the Board of Education.
Is there support? Mary, support? Discussion? Dan?
Dan?
Given the nature of having to have this done at a relatively quick time constraint, if we get over that threshold, are we prepared as a board to have an emergency meeting to make that? Because now that we're meeting once a month, is that something that, because if anything over and above that needs to have our approval? I'm just concerned that if we do go over that, if we're middle of our, you know, we're a week after our meeting, now we're three weeks out, we can, within a, what is it, 24 to 48 hour window?
I think that's exactly what we committed to when we went to one meeting a month, right? This kind of thing could come up, right? And that we have to be ready to have one of those meetings. Cory?
Couple of questions, or one big question is, I know last year we ran into a situation where we had given 25,000, and there was a situation where, oh, we went way over that, and now we need the board to go back and look at it again. What, what kind of assurance do we have that this isn't going to happen again? Or are we better off looking at leaving it at the 25 where these guys can do it? If it has to go to 50, get you involved, then board, just so there's some accountability? So that, because I know last time we gave the 25 and it went over that, who's to say next time it's not going to be 75 before they come to us?
So what I sense is you're, you're suggesting a possible amendment to the motion. Verbalize that again. What are you, what are you suggesting?
I'm, I'm just questioning or getting some reassurance that what happened last year isn't going to happen again this year. Because we gave approval for 25,000, and then we had a meeting where, oh, it went over 25, nobody knew about it, we need you guys to approve that. Now we're going for 50,000, are we going to have another meeting that says, oh, we went over, we need your approval of 75,000?
I agree. I think one of our jobs is to be, you know, is to run the budget, help run the budget. And that's what the public expects us to do, is to keep a tight rein on it. And I think we have to be careful doing that. That is what our constituents hold us responsible for, and I take that very seriously.
So what I hear you both...
Even though we're in the middle of construction.
Yeah. So what I hear you both saying is that you're not opposed to the $50,000 expansion, but you're looking for an additional input. Is that what I hear you saying?
Maybe.
Right now it's what, 25?
Yes.
Right now it's 25.
25.
And wanting to double that.
I wouldn't be opposed to the 50 if you were involved in that 50,000.
Someone representing the board.
And if it went over 50, then the entire board needs to be involved. Just so there's not a, hey, we spent 60,000, we need you to go ahead and US approve it for it, like last year.
Yes, sir.
Can we look at a mechanism within our, within this recommendation that we keep the 50, but we need to know when we're going over the threshold? And we need to know within a timeframe, if we can narrow that timeframe to, if we spot it that we're going to go over because of soils or whatever the case may be, or mechanicals and all the suck, we need more than the 50. We need to know within a, if it's during that day, we need to know that day, we can meet within 24 hours to give that additional approval over the 50. I just don't want to be in a situation where we're two weeks away from the approval happening, and then we can't go back at that point. I guess we have to have some, something in this language that says the board, or the board president, needs to know within a 24 hour window that we've exceeded that.
Exceeded the 50 or exceeded the 25 and need to go to the 50?
Exceeded the 50. I mean, I think we all can understand that circumstances, especially when you're dealing with something you can't put eyes on, it is going to escalate and can escalate rather quickly. And I think we have a working relationship, and I think both parties understand the heartburn that we had with going over last time. And, and I think this is a fair amount to say, you know, 50 is a fair amount to say that, you know, we don't think it's going to go over this, because they have a lot more experience at this than we do. But to your points, we need to know within a certain timeframe with that 12 to 24 hours to, the board president needs to let us know, hey, we've exceeded that threshold, and if we need to throw, we need to have a meeting to approve that dollar figure, so they can keep their contractors working. And I think there's something that we can move forward with, that number, and have a mechanism on our own to, to kind of approve that.
So Dan, are you, are you, are you opposed to what they're suggesting?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I just want to have something that allows us to say, yes, we're aware that it's going to be over.
Yeah.
And yes, we approve anything over this within a timely manner so that we can keep the, this is a tight window.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about a lot of work happening in a short period of time, and decisions have to be made rather quickly. And I don't want to hold anybody up, but I also understand our role as a board with the budget. So I think we have, we have to have something in there that we know what's going on within a 24 hour window, and we can approve it within a 24 hour window of that.
Got it, got it. So, public and IDS, so you understand what the board is wrestling with, because I'm not sure that either one of you were at the meeting that we had, the meeting that you were going to go.
I think Jay was there.
Jay was.
Yeah, he was there.
The, the, there was one item that was 55% over the threshold that we learned about after the fact. And feeling responsible for that budget side, and, and we thank you that you're doing work under what the expectation is, but line by line, that kind of stuff gets scary. And so when you're asking us to double the threshold and the massive work being done, before we know it, that 50 can be 100, and we're learning after the fact. And so that's what we're worried about. So the two things are, what's making us go to 50, but we had a 25 that got exceeded by 50%. So what happens if that happens again? So now, now we got a $50,000 that has exceeded. So that's, I just wanted to explain to everybody why we're kind of jostling around with this language.
Well, and kind of to the point of, the one we approved for 25 had the same wording, that anything over 25 would require a presentation.
Correct.
And that didn't happen, so who's to say we get 50, that, oh, hey, we spent 75, no presentation, no, it's, we're kind of put in a bind where we have to approve it at that point.
Correct, correct.
So, as we kind of look at maybe amending this recommendation, am I understanding that we would waive the, we would waive the requirement for a presentation, a formal presentation to the board, and just require a verbal, hey, you are X amount of dollars over that threshold, and here's what it is, and give it to Sam, Sam reports it to Tim, and Tim lets the board know, or the board president, whoever that person will be at the time, and then the board has 24 hours from that point to say, yes, we approve this dollar figure. Is that what we're looking at? Because for them to put a formal presentation, I mean, they're working on the scope of work, now they have to have a presentation, come here, we've got to sync schedules up, I'm sure their schedules will meet with what ours is, but you're talking about six or seven people getting together and clearing everything and making sure that everybody can be here. We have to have at least four of us present to vote. So I just think if they can just tell us what that dollar figure is, present it to the board, the board takes a quick vote, and we need to within 24 hours to give them that approval. Is that...
Or even do some type of threshold where, like right now it's 25, if it's between 25 and 50, they need to be coming to you. If it's 50,001, it needs to come to us, noise and a buzz.
Yeah, but when you say come to us, meaning a formal presentation?
Because that's what we're just... 50,000.
I know.
We're already doubling from 25 to 50. I think, I think what Cory's saying is that if it's over 25, if it's anywhere between 25 and $50,000, you must include the board president, if he's not available, the vice president, so that someone from the board is understanding why we're going over the threshold. Then you're wanting to know, you're wanting to add coverage, what went over 50?
Anything over 50, I think we need to know about it.
Well, and that's what this motion says, if it's over 50,000.
And that's what I want to come back to IDS with, is that how do we avoid what happened before happening again with a much larger number? But I think, well, it's two different issues. One is, you're asking for what grants us the ability to go from 25 to 50. The other thing you're doing, which I think is wise, is saying, I don't want to get burned twice. I'm the top number. So I don't know, you can do it in one motion. I think you've got to do the first motion, which addresses this language. If these guys, if, if we want to be able to keep doing business, and we want to raise the threshold, and you're wanting to have the board president be part of that decision-making process, because he then represents you, and, and then I think you would amend the motion, we would vote on it. The second thing we would do is then have a discussion briefly with IDS while they're here, as to how do we avoid swallowing numbers we weren't knowing we were going to swallow?
Because hypothetically, if this was, say, voted down, it stays at 25. So if, you know, we could amend it where it stays 25, where Tim and Sam can carte blanche say, yeah, do it, get it done. If it's between 25 and 50, you need to be involved in that. And then if it's over 50, it comes to us.
Yes, ma'am?
And just to complicate matters, if it's, if it's going between 25 and 50, and it comes to the board president, what if there is, what if there's a disagreement? What if it doesn't agree?
Then I imagine it's going to go to a meeting.
Then we need to rebuild that in there.
I think it's going to be automatic, because you can't approve it, right?
Well, I...
And we have to have a public meeting to vote, right? Is that right?
It has to be a public meeting.
Okay. And that's a 24 hour notice. I just want to be sure they're clear on that.
Dan?
I just want to make sure that we're not giving one person the authority to cash a check for $25,000. Whether that's you, or if you're not here, it's vice president, whoever that person is, I think it should be incumbent that the board is notified, we meet as a board, and then we, the board as a body makes a decision. Because the workings of a board, each individual person is a board member. Nothing happens until the board takes a vote. And until that board meets together and takes a vote, then it, then it kicks that into serving our policies that we have written. So I would say we come up with the number that we're comfortable with, whether it's 25 or 50, and then anything over and above is another motion that says, anything at that number plus $1 comes to the board, and the board gives approval within 24 hours so that they can continue work.
So why don't we look at it, like I said, with the two different motions?
Okay, you want me to make...
So, so I think Cory has the first one. So Cory, let's put the motion on the table so we can discuss it. Angela, the motion stays the same, it's $50,000. But what would happen is Sam and Tim would be required to get with the chairman or the president of the board. Yes? Yes, please.
So, in order to ensure, Cory, that the communication takes place as requested, I think you could just move to amend your motion to give authority to superintendent and assistant superintendent of operations, along with the board president...
Just add that.
To approve change orders up to 50,000, and keep everything else the same. If it's over 50,000, you're going to have to call a board meeting so that everybody can hear it and vote on it.
So we're adding a comma and board president?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then...
Would someone like to second that motion, on that amendment?
Before I second it, you want to have him formally read it? I don't want to get into...
How about Angela, you want to read it? Or, because you probably have it on your computer, right?
I do, but we did second it already.
Right, you seconded it.
Do I have to vote down before you can amend?
I think we have to vote down and then amend it.
I thought you just, okay, very good, very good. So, yep.
Motion as presented.
As presented. All right, so let's look at the, the motion as presented, as it's written on your agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
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 All right, motion is turned down. Now, Cory, if you would read that very motion, adding comma and board president, I think it works.
Correct. So we say, move to approve to give authority to the superintendent and assistant superintendent of business and board president to approve change orders in construction, equipment, or technology contracts up to $50,000. Anything over 50,000 would require a presentation and authorization from the Board of Education.
Is there support for that amendment?
I don't think you have, they are...
Okay. I don't think they would want to either.
Okay.
All right, support. All right, there's support. Now discussion.
Support.
Real simple point.
Yes, sir?
The way this is written, it's saying that the board has to present.
It does, that's, I see what you're saying, yes.
Say that again?
To the board. It says, it says would require a presentation and authorization from the board.
To the board.
Presentation to...
To the board.
A presentation to and authorization from.
To the board.
Okay.
So amended to say?
Amended to say to...
Do you want to say it again, Cory?
Presentation to, comma, and authorization from, comma, the Board of Education. Presentation to, authorization from.
Correct.
Correct.
Got that?
No small changes withstanding, we have support from Dan?
Yes.
Discussion?
Work.
All those in favor, say aye. Oops, sorry, did I go too fast?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, actually, I had it earlier. And I'm fine with this, but if it was to go over the 50,000, is 20, 48 hours enough turnaround time for anything that has to be done? I want to be sure that's realistic also, because if it's going to be that much of a, spending that much money, it's going to be something really big. Is that a reasonable amount of time for the contractors?
So Mary, I think that's going to be in the second motion.
Okay.
So let, so you, that's, that is the question, you're asking the right question. All right, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Now, Dan, you're suggesting a second potential motion.
Correct.
So IDS, again, the concern is, as a board, being notified as quickly as possible that something's even going beyond what you thought. Right? Which I know is, is, is not a perfect science. But we've kind of felt caught from behind, like something that was weeks, I mean, should have known, should have known when, when you're standing on the roof realizing that you've got to move a whole unit, that that was going to cost more. And so, so now you have a board saying, I got to protect the front end too. Because how do I know you're not going to go over it? Because you went 45% over it before, 55% over it before. So Dan, you were suggesting some type of timeframe?
Tony, as are we, internal guy for the construction side of things. What would you say, Tim, can I ask a question? Tom, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What would you say would be a realistic timeframe for us to put on this, given your relationship with Clark and IDS, knowing the position that we want to be in, so that we understand? Would you set that timeframe? I don't want to say 24 hours, if it's not realistic. I want to be realistic, I want to be fair to everybody. This isn't a, this isn't a situation where we're trying to beat anybody up. I just think we want to be covered, and we want to be confident that when we move forward that all this is taken care of. So what do you think of fair timeframes?
One piece I wanted to mention is, we're going to have a full-time soils testing engineering company. They're, they're neutral, we hire them, so they represent us. So it's just not a contractor out there saying, hey, this is bad. They're testing that soils, they're making recommendations, they're making reports, and they'll also work with Spalding Decker and IDS, who is our engineering firm, our architectural engineering firm, that, you know, they'll coordinate with them, and they'll make the recommendations, they'll look at it, you'll get instant response back from Spalding Decker. So there's a lot of cases where maybe there might be, we've got to do an undercut, they might say, no, we'll just put some geofabric in there, and that's a great way of doing it. And there's different circumstances, like if it's in a false loop or something, we might have to have, you know, denser, you know, subgrading and stuff like that. But those recommendations will be put on a report, will be brought to us right away. We'll know that day, if we're getting into big issues. And then I would say within, easily I'd say within a day or two, we could get those to the board through Tim, through Sam, and brought to you if we see a potentially big problem. Things that scare me more than soils, and I'm not saying this could happen, but if they dug up, let's say, an old oil storage tank, that causes huge different problems. That's just a different situation altogether. You have to handle that through the DEQ and stuff like that. I don't anticipate seeing anything like that, but you know... I don't anticipate seeing anything like that, but you never know. Stranger things, yeah, stranger things happen. And I hate bringing that up, but as far as general soil conditions, undercuts and that, there's different things we can do. I know that the Clark team will have negotiated unit prices that they'll have firm, so if they know, you know, choke it out with stone, or top it off with 21 AA, what's it gonna cost, they'll have those in place. So we should be able to turn around relatively quick, you know, cost, you know, for these types of things.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that reasonable?
Are you feeling 48 hours, 24 to 48 hours?
I think 48 hours. We should be able to really know.
We should know, we should be able to vote on it in 48 hours.
All right, go ahead and try, let's get the verbiage out there.
Let's see if I can get this on the first go. Move to approve to give the authority to the superintendent and assistant superintendent of business and operations and board president to approve change orders over $50,000 with a vote by the board within 48 hours of understanding of soil issues.
Unforeseen contingency.
Okay.
Right. Right, right, right. So make it focused on information given, right? And then 48 hours of knowing, we know.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go along, we have other motions to make?
We'll come back, we can come back.
Let me write out a motion as we go through.
Yep.
We'll come back to this, I'll have formalized. So I strike my motion with the ability to come back before the end of this meeting.
We'll do it on other...
Yep, thank you.
All right, we have a reimbursement payment request for policy number 0144.1 for Eric Foster. Would someone like to take on that motion? Yes, Mary?
Move to approve the reimbursement request of $301.20 to Eric Foster as presented.
Is there support? Chad, support? Discussion?
I just have one quick question on that. In the email that was sent out, or that was attached to that, it said somebody removed sales tax. Why would that be removed, and he had to take it out himself?
Because the school board doesn't pay sales taxes. The school district doesn't pay sales tax.
But he did.
Right.
If he used a district credit card and processed it using a district credit card, that means the district paid for it, he would have to reimburse that.
Oh, okay.
That's the same with any district employee as well, just to be clear.
So if he's going on school business, and it's a hundred bucks for the hotel, and it costs $10 in sales tax, he's paying for that, the school's paying him a hundred dollar...
That's correct. And we always tell, obviously, our internal staff as well, when you use a district credit card, or if you don't, you apply for reimbursement, need to ensure that you're using our tax ID number in order to not pay taxes in the state of Michigan. But there are deep instances where things occur, obviously, and someone forgets, or, you know, there's different circumstances. Unfortunately, the employees still have to cover that portion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Safety path contribution request.
So I just wanted to inform the board that I was contacted by CJ, and he is making a grant affordable through the township in regards to a safety path along Ray Road down to Meyer, and he asked if we would be included. I verbally gave him our support, but I wanted to bring it before you. He was looking for a contribution of around $10,000 from the district. I think the total cost, estimated cost of the safety path was over $600,000. They were getting some of the other, I think Meyer, and maybe Levy to participate and put some of that money in, as well as looking for grant money. I just wanted to bring it before you, and if it's okay, I will just have Sam put that in our amended budget in January or February as a line item. And if the township does get the grant, then we'll participate, and we'll put in our $10,000. If we don't get it, then we don't throw it. So, just more of an information item and feedback. If that is not what you want me to do, or you are not in agreement with that, please let me know.
So right now, your plan will be to put it in the 220 budget?
This budget, but the amended budget.
The amended budget, okay. Anyone in opposition, anyone, yes?
I'm not so much in opposition, as much as, so it's my understanding that that path is gonna go from school property to the Meyer gas station area.
Correct.
Okay, so that would create a safety path, which, in my humble opinion, is very well-spent money.
Yes.
We have kids that are here after school, they may, I think right now, I think the path that they take is jump the fence, walk down the apartment complex, go through the golf course, and you got cars moving in and out of there.
All those kids might be watching right now, you talking about...
That's good. Wouldn't be the first time I was a bad influence. I think if we're creating an avenue for them to go on a pathway, I guess my question is, is our contribution of $10,000 enough? If we wanna keep our kids safe, do we say, you know what, this is important to us? This is something to think about. I don't know where we are budget, I know where we are budget-wise, we're in a good position. But is this throw us over, or add another $5,000? I don't know, just something that we wanna think about? If it's that important, then...
My gut would tell me that, at a $600,000 cost, the township wants to be able to say the school's in. The school district's in, they see the value. And so the $10,000 is not the issue, it's the fact that we see the value.
That we're in partnership.
It's a token, it's a to, yeah. I'm a full favorite, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
We spend, well, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars lately to keep our kids safe in the building, and now going outside the building between school and their extracurricular activities. You know, I think it's a very wise investment to keep them off of the road while our cars are moving. So I think it's...
So if they end up $10,000 short, tell them to come back to us.
I was thinking like $2,000.
Yes, ma'am?
I just had a question about the path itself. I also agree that along Ray Road, we need to have a safe place for people to walk. Along the high school property here, I don't walk that very much. There is the sidewalk, and that we would want to extend it. It goes on, it already goes down up to the county trail, that it already goes that far.
It's really on the northeast side of our property up to the...
Between the parking lot entrances?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To the corner of Ray Road and North Action Road, and then straight down Ray Road all the way.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, very good. Curriculum and instruction, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, tonight, we've got Brian Edwards and Kerry Connor from the high school. They'll be introducing the Theory of Knowledge. It's not really a new class, we've got it for some time, it's part of the DP program. You see the three components that are listed here, they'll kinda give you a little background on it, but we've recreated the class and combined some things, and it's, they'll explain what the changes are. So if you'll give them your attention.
Thanks for your time this evening. I'm Brian Edwards, as Ken mentioned, this is Kerry Connor. And we're just presenting to you, we've kinda gone through the request, the revision of the Theory of Knowledge course. Maybe if you're not sure what it is, we can give you some insights as to the IB diploma programs. But it would be a way to help us better combine Theory of Knowledge course, as well as the Extended Essay and CAS, CASD projects. So, it's kinda hard to see from back here, even though I should have this completely memorized, but I apologize. If you're not overly moved to IB diploma program, the core of it, according to their diagram at least, would be the TOK course, and I think they kinda get equal value in the Extended Essay project, which is a 4,000-word research paper, and the Creativity Activity and Service project, which is an individual student project that focuses on those three areas. So the course is a traditional seated classroom course. All IB diploma candidates must take and must pass the class. And there's also two assessments within the class that they need to complete in order to receive their IB diploma, as well as other requirements from their other four classes. And then they also have the two additional projects, the Extended Essay and the CAS project. So, one struggle has always been, how do we fit CAS and Extended Essay into the classroom? TOK was only given two semesters in the past, and we had to take time out of that course, then in the other two. And as IB continued to expand the course, we had less and less time to accomplish the majority of the curriculum, which I think at one point probably underserved the students in their ability to write good presentations and a good external essay. So, what we wanted to do was add one semester, so we give them a complete Theory of Knowledge course, as well as give them dedicated instructional time for Extended Essay, as well as CAS. So I'll let Kerry speak about how this works for the Extended Essay project.
The Extended Essay is a large research project, as Brian stated. It's a 4,000-word essay that students self-select a topic in one of the diploma program areas, subject areas. They work under the guidance of a teacher, who is their supervisor and mentor, and they work under the guidance of the Extended Essay coordinator to do this. In the past, it's been a significant stress around students to get this work accomplished outside of classroom time, because a 4,000-word essay is larger than anything that they've ever written before in their life. They're also working to balance the rest of their classes at the same time, get this all accomplished in a short-term period.
The CAS project requires them to use greater levels of independence, to think about things that they're doing that involve creativity, whether it's problem-solving or activity, whether it's, you know, tracking workouts or things they're doing in their personal time to improve their physical health, or the service hours and projects that they're doing. So, we felt by giving them more seated time to have the additional instruction, to have the necessary conversations, and most importantly, at least for Extended Essay and CAS, the reflection of times, because that's a big component for IB, with their diploma programs. So, yep, so what we've done, here's just a sample unit. It was really interesting, in the days that we were released to be able to work on building this third semester, we started to notice a lot of similarities between, like, the big question units of Theory of Knowledge, the individual CAS learner objectives, and then the different phases of the research process. And I think, you know, our sixth unit kind of demonstrates that ideally. So, in Theory of Knowledge, our big question for the unit focuses on perspective, and that is our understanding of the world determined by our perspective. So in this course, we look at that through multiple and individual perspectives, particularly like shared and personal knowledge, as well as historical knowledge. So there's a couple points of interest that bolded up there. Those help students to understand the role of bias, personal experience, authority, you know, where knowledge comes from. And then, when we looked at some of the CAS learner objectives, we realized that there is room for discussion about prejudice and biases that exist in the society, starting within our school, and working out to the world as a whole. So we saw those align nicely. And then, when you get to the Extended Essay, you're doing research, you're gonna have a lot of different perspectives on a topic, and students have to weigh those out, to look at which ones help us satisfy the claims and research question of their essay, and which ones could be used as counterclaims to help create balance and fairness within their project.
With this additional time, we'll be actually able to provide them with direct instruction on strategies, research strategies, 21st century learning skills, time management, stress management, things that will support them as they go forward, doing academic research at a collective level, understanding how to appropriately use sources, cite sources, and create holistic experience for them, or re-unifying the entire core, and giving them a broader sense of what it means to be an IB student going forward in their life.
I think it also helps them utilize a lot of the digital tools that you guys have been sort of kind of providing to us over the last four, five years, specifically with digital data.
Yep. Focus on database skills, and finding peer-reviewed articles and academic research to support their credible claims, and looking at evidence sources.
So, we have any questions? Any comments or questions? Yes, Mary?
I did have a little trouble reading the schedule, as was in the packet, and I'm not sure who set up all the explanation pages where all the columns are. I don't know if that was a state form or something like that, but...
I think that's probably...
And it made it really, really long. But anyway, I was having trouble understanding the calendar, because I couldn't see it well. So by adding an extra semester, what does that actually mean? So that they start half a year earlier, or the programs go...
It was originally just two semesters, the end of junior year, beginning of senior year.
Okay. Okay, so it was already split up between the summer break?
It was already split.
Okay.
And then...
So how would that look?
So now that we have, I think, that more continuous seating time, so it's gonna be all of junior year and then the beginning of senior year.
Okay.
So we can really get a head start on that, especially with like the Extended Essay project, because they wouldn't start working on that until like January of their junior year, and then it's due late fall of their senior year. And that's, having that gap in the summer, how do you tell a student to work on research? It's really hard to make those demands on them when you know that they're going through there during the school year.
We are also held to the IB calendar deadlines, so the TOK projects are released in September of their senior year, and Extended Essay is due in the spring of their senior year. So we're trying to pace things, so that we're giving them all of junior year to work on something, and then finishing things off in senior year, so that they can...
Yeah, that calendar's hard to read, and we realized during our last curriculum writing session that we might want to go back and maybe have them under one class in Atlas, just so that we can show how that will space out time.
So you'd be adding, maybe you'd be losing another elective or another academic course, but really they'll be gaining the time to get this project done, which you're saying would be much more beneficial to the students?
Yeah, and we've polled these, like, and actually talked to graduated diploma candidates, and they said if they had an extra semester, they would have, like, their stress level and anxiety levels would have gone down, and feel like they would have the opportunity for more effort and for product.
We surveyed graduating students as they were exiting, and we asked them for their feedback, and significantly, they reported high amounts of stress and trouble finding the time to complete all these extra tasks that they saw without classroom time dedicated to support them.
Finding it interesting also how you can put all those pieces together, so they're learning about how to do these other things that they're gonna have to do for those projects.
We were floored when we started to see how...
Yeah, that's fantastic, and it helps things flow. Very interesting one that you chose to share with us today too, about perspective. I appreciate this discussion, I liked it. Hear what everybody has to talk about.
Do you ever wanna come and sit in one of these class every morning?
Yeah.
First and seventh hour up there.
And each unit will end with a CAS experience of... And each unit will end with a CAS experience and a Extended Essay experience, and then Brian will go over the next unit, so it will continue this cycle throughout.
Instead of just, let's just do this mad sprint through the Theory of Knowledge class and then sprint to...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dan?
I just want to just make sure, I know I heard it. This is just for the IB diploma students, correct?
Yeah, the...
Because I didn't want people...
Right now, I have two seated students that are not diploma students, and they're going through all of this together.
But it's their choice, right? I want to be sure that people don't get the message that...
They want to stay in the third semester, they have to do.
Okay. I just want, I want to make sure that the message doesn't get out there that this is the new curriculum.
Yeah.
This is a very select group of individuals that are writing a 4,000-word essay. I want to make that point because all of a sudden, people start hearing, "I can write a 4,000-word essay." And, and we got a bunch of kids transferring out. I just felt...
No, but we do have two students that have elected to write that essay.
And that's great.
Because they want the college experience.
Yep. I think that's, and that goes to our point that we want to challenge everybody to their maximum potential. The kids, Beelazoe, if their maximum potential is more than what they're getting, I'm glad we have it.
I've even, I've had a couple of current senior diploma candidates tell me that their friends approach them and say, "Man, that essay's got to really be a downer," you know? It's too bad you got to go through that, I think, so... But they're like, "Yeah, come back and ask me about it again next year when you're in college and you're trying to figure out how to..."
Yep. Great point. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just really quick to follow up, we'll be asking for January for approval for this curriculum, and sorry for getting into the board packet late, there was just a few things we had to clean up and get ready for the presentation and so forth. And quite honestly, I then forgot after doing all of that to send it over to Mr. Weaver, so I'll...
Yeah, thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Kerry.
Mr. Weaver, anything else?
That would be it, but just, you know, to Mr. John Sancho's point, you know, this is an elective class, it is quite rigorous. I have a young lady myself in my house that is signed up and studying the class, she's junior, and they've already started, they're doing a fantastic job. She enjoys the class immensely, so they've done a fantastic job, and looking forward to see what they do. Mr. Edwards is also taking on the CAS part, which he's going to need additional training in IB as well too, so we'll be sending him off for that, as well as he needs to be updated on Theory of Knowledge over the next... So, it's quite a commitment, and then Kerry Connor's coming out of the media center to help with the Extended Essay during her time, so she's going to have hours where she's not here, and she's vital to the support of the high school through that. And so, there's, that's also going to cause extra demands on her time as well too, to make up for that time, to ensure to keep the media center running, and that, she's integral. I've told many times by Mr. Wolf to do the whole lifeblood here of the high school. But also speaking to the point of required classes, we will be coming up in probably within the next six months with a graduation requirement request for the high school, just to kind of put it on the radar for the personal project. It is a requirement of the middle-years program, and I don't want to go into it, but I just felt like you kind of introduced it a little bit, that all kids will be having to go through. It will be a sophomore requirement, and we'll be into it a little bit later, but if you want to do some research, look up what the personal project, personally, personal inquiry project is all about. It's a great opportunity for kids, but we'll be talking about that with you as far as any further graduation.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Barna?
Yes, the first item on the agenda is the safety security update for the month. First item was the AEDs that had been installed, and additional AEDs have been purchased and installed at all of the district buildings. So, I want to thank Jill Lamont for, again, basically taking that for this project and ensuring that this was done in a very timely fashion, and it was. And so, we're really happy that these were installed. In addition, we also are looking at door numbering of all of our buildings, both internally and externally. And so, Jill and Tony have both contacted two different firms, and they're in the midst of surveying all of the schools to ensure that we want them in specific areas on all the external doors, obviously, but also just the type of signs and just more specifics. So, we're looking to get budgets from these two companies for these door numbering, for the door numbers themselves. Next item on the agenda is rekeying of the district and the development of the district key policy. So, as many of you are aware, this was one of the projects that was approved by the 2019 Michigan State Police Safety Grant, and so we need to obviously put out a formal bid for this project, as well as spend the money prior to June 1st of 2020. So, time is of the essence. And so, today, as an example, at Cabinet, both Tony and Jill came to present and really talked about some very specifics of the policy that they have put together thus far, draft form, and just spoke to some of the elements that we really need to discuss, and eventually we'll have to decide before we bring to the board for obviously a final review, as well as a vote for the policy. The policy's integral before we start, obviously, not just putting an RFP out there, but before we start installing, once we do select a vendor and move forward with rekeying, to ensure that we're not having to do this again in five to 10 years. It is a sizable investment, regardless of sorts of funds, it's approximately $90,000. We need to ensure, we ensure that it's done correctly. Next item on the agenda is the Pre-Planned Live installation, and so, again, another MSP safety-approved project. Just want everyone to know that the Panic Buttons that were presented to us a few months back, OELC did receive the first installation of the hardware for the Panic Buttons, and that went very well, and it is working. Going forward, the next building to receive it will either be OVA or the administration building, and then we'll go down the line from there. And so, at our January meeting, I'll provide you another update as to where we're at with those installations as well. And in addition to those installations of the Panic Buttons, we'll be working very closely with Pre-Planned to ensure that they also start installing the wall-mounted Stop the Bleed or safety kits that we discussed as well in the board group. In addition to that, the 3M window film installation, yet again, in another MSP 2019 safety project. So far, OES, Leonard, OVA have been, and OMS, I'm sorry, have all received the 3M safety film, and the installations are complete, and so we are going to be heading down the line. We have our meeting tomorrow here at the high school to discuss placement of the 3M window film, so we're looking forward to that conversation, should be a good one tomorrow morning, or I should say it's tomorrow afternoon. Finally, the grant application. There's a new grant that came up, it was through Four County Community Foundation. Jill had discovered this grant and applied for the grant as well, and so we're looking to hopefully get some funding there. There's some communications that the district has, flip charts for emergency situations that we could use the funding from, so we're hoping to get this grant as well. Any questions?
The Pre-Pla, the Panic Button?
Yeah, sure.
What's the rollout? Like, when's everything done?
Well, everything has to be done because we need to pay them prior to June 1st.
I thought that fits under the same thing, right?
Oh, absolutely. And so, we're looking to have them finish by the first to second week of February, full installation.
Everything?
I'm hopeful.
By the end of February?
I am, I am looking for that, yes.
Okay. And do you have a...
An operational, I apologize, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that addition. And I know that Jill's been working on an operations management software. I mean, all of this is requiring something that's screaming out, saying, "How do you make sure everything from batteries are checked and, you know?" So, so how are we doing on that software? Or do you have an update on that, or maybe next time?
Yeah, maybe next time. I don't personally have an update since I'm not working directly on that. I know Jill has been involved, working with some very smart minds at OVA that are stinker with that database.
Okay.
But again, that will be the database that does indeed include the all-inclusive list of, you know, safety-related items, as you mentioned, you know, AEDs as an example, replacement of batteries, obviously water testing is one item. I mean, it really just ranges the gamut from a lot of different things that right now we just know this is due when, but it'll be great to have that one database. And obviously, several owners of all of those projects within that database of those, you know, detailed projects.
So, is it fair to ask that maybe in, in the January meeting, we could get an update on that and also looking at its rollout in connection to...
It's fair.
Yeah. Talk to Cabinet, see if that's a possibility, if the agenda's not too long. You have something?
No.
Oh, okay.
You know, if not January, possibly February.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything else for Sam? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, it's actually really good, that we talked about safety and security, is, the next item is the EOP, so the Emergency Operations Plans. And just a little bit of a background on the Emergency Operations Plans, the district originally had one Emergency Operations Plan prior to 2018. As a part of the 2019 Safety Grant, which we were awarded, it was necessitated that we had one for each school building. And so, I developed those in order to get the grant application by the state in order for them to approve some of the projects that we have in front of us. Well, going forward, the state of Michigan, the legislature has basically made it mandatory through the law that we have all of our Emergency Operations Plans reviewed by local law enforcement, vetted by local law enforcement, and obviously brought to the Board of Education. Jill has done that. So, it's been a lot of work on Jill's part. She took what I put together for this grant and really fine-tuned it and really brought it up to date for each of the buildings. And so, if you don't mind, without further ado, I'll bring Jill up here to discuss some of the changes and updates she's made to these EOPs. Jill?
Hi, good to meet you. I did bring them with me just to show you that they exist. So, I know in your board packet, you have the district-wide one, and most of them look very much alike to that, because it's all just the standard things that they told us from the state of Michigan, Homeland Security and the Michigan State Police, as well as the Oakland County Sheriff's, that we needed in each of the plans. So, a lot of it is identical, but what I really focused on doing this time around was making each individual building very specific in the event of an emergency, that their information is up to date for this school year. And what that immediately begs, Tom, has been, what do we do next school year when it's not accurate anymore? And, and just to really briefly touch on the operational software since I'm up here, we have been working on it. I met with Brian and Matt Sandler again today about it. It's been a constant topic. It's being coded right now, the user interface is already ready. Now, it's a matter of cataloging these types of items and finding out what data needs to be in there. So, if you're running a form, is it just a simple yes, no? Or, like we talked about some of our meetings, would it require that if I say no to something, "No, I did not check the AED," then how frequently does it remind me to do it? Or if I said something was wrong with, let's say, a furnace filter, then does it require me to replace it? Or what information does it require from a coding perspective? What's the, how many steps out does the software go? How deeply does it dive into each of these activities? Or is it just something where we wanted to maintain information? So, right now, we're trying to make it as robust as we can, that it has reminders and deeper information in it than just a calendar. So, we can really deep into that. But as far as the emergency plans go, I have the district-wide one right here, it's bigger, it has all the emergency shut-offs for all utilities at every single building. I want to publicly thank Tony Starkins, has been an amazing help with me on this, and I started to finish our days together these days. He's been helping me find them at every building, understand how to work them and how to use them, and then this is being rolled out to all the building administrators. That's why we wanted to create these for them, so I'm actually going to hand these out at Ad Team so that they're armed with their district, or I'm sorry, their building's emergency plan that's specific to their building. We also have it for non-school buildings, Transportation Department needed one, as well as Central Office. The number one change I just want to highlight is that every building has a crisis management plan. Before, we had to have mandated crisis management roles, so it said you may be the crisis incident commander, but nothing that really explained what that means when you're in that role. So, okay, I'm Steve Wolf at the high school, I'm the incident commander, what, what am I to do in the event of an incident? So, now we've walked it out, it's very succinct, it's about three pages for every single crisis management team that shows exactly what's expected of them. I call 911, or I, you know, I get in touch with this individual, I contact the school liaison officer. It's very realistic, and I think it's very approachable. Those documents truthfully are not very approachable in their entire data, they're each about 198 to 202 pages, okay? So, in the event of an emergency, I don't expect the building administrator to flip through this book, probably. That's where that grant comes in that Sam mentioned, and I'm hoping to get the flip charts updated in all the buildings so that they can quickly access the same information in a more succinct way. Another huge change in there is that we added Alice. The entire Alice protocol that all of our staff and all of our subs and every, every person in an actual building who's dealing with students are fully trained in is, was not in that plan yet, because, just because of the timing of the way that it rolled it out. So, now we've differentiated between an internal or an external threat causing lockdown. So, if the threat is someone with a gun is outside of the building, we're going to react differently than if someone with a gun, God forbid, is inside of the building. They're two separate instances and separate protocol, and they've been, you know, the verbiage for that we got with Pre-Planned Live, with Jason Lower, Oakland County Sheriff's, Addison Township has it, also their substation for Leonard is within their jurisdiction, and they've approved all of it. So, night locks were added, the duress buttons, the Stop the Bleed wall-mounted safety kits are in there as a district resource that we've invested in. And really, it's what it's done, I think, more importantly than printing off those reminders, it has created this dialogue surrounding safety with all the administrators. And it's another topic that'll be on our Ad Team agenda tomorrow. It's just been an ongoing conversation, so I really want to thank the OVA staff too, has embraced this project, both the operational software piece and just helping me with these. Some of the OVA staff really teamed up with me and helped me out to get those prepared for tonight, so I wanted to thank them also. There's a directory, like I said, with every teacher's classroom and extension number for this year, but each building secretary helped me to get, as well as their cell phone numbers for everyone in the crisis management team for every building. And that way, Jason Lower has those, those are with Oakland County and available to everyone in the cars, so that if you're having an emergency in one of the buildings, you can't get through to the building, let's say phone line is cut, something like that, they have the crisis team at that building's personal cell phone numbers at every building, including Transportation and Central Office. So, I don't know if anybody wants to look at or touch them, they are there, and they are different and unique. Any questions?
Not a question as much as a comment for Sam, Jill, Tony. I'm trying to do the quick math in my head, we spent close to a million dollars in security when you add in the, all the life plan...
Life locks?
Life locks. Everything that we've invested, the windows, close to a million dollars. But what we're really talking about is now knowing what to do when a situation, God forbid, happens. That's meaningful. The money's one thing, but the ability to take action when something happens, you can't put a dollar figure on it. So, I thank you, I think you all understand how this board is approaching safety for our students, and I think your work is done.
Thanks, yeah. I wanted to add though, it's all of our administrators here who have jumped on board with Alice, and they are all trainers, certified Alice trainers. They've trained their staff in their buildings as well. And so, I echo what you have said, that, yeah, we have spent a lot of money on hard assets, but really, it's all about communication, truly, internally, and ensuring that everyone knows what to do and knows that they have the ability to think themselves, and what's the best situation for my kids and I in that classroom at that time, as an example.
So, Jill, two things. One is, so, in the manuals, the things that are going to be given to the different schools, they're currently updated with Pre-Planned and everything that we hope to be putting into effect. So, they don't already need to be edited?
Correct.
Second, second thing is, could you, could you explain the reasoning for creating our own database rather than buying something turnkey? What the motivation for that was? And secondly, given that fact, who maintains it five years from now?
It's a great question that we actually started discussing earlier today. I don't know a perfect answer to that, and I would invite anyone else to chime in, but I don't know who's going to own it once it's done. I think right now, we're more focused on just getting something operational and making sure we catalog these processes. So, today, it's mine, and I'm happy it first be mine, and I'm going to wrap my arms around it. Once it's done, I'm not, I'm not certain of the answer to that. But the reason why we decided not to do it was really cost prohibitive, I think, was a big part of it, and also, we have the talent in-house. Brian Collins at OVA was doing this in his, in his real life prior to coming here, out of the world, and has the knowledge and, and the interest in doing it for us. And so, we can actually tailor-make it to exactly how we want it to operate versus some of the other products that we looked at. And, and we looked at a budget, you know, and looked at his time and how, whether it would be time well spent or time spent... be time well spent or time spent, you know, too much outside of OVA and working together. Janet and Matt have been fantastic about making sure that, you know, we're using Brian in the best way possible for the right reasons and prioritizing projects. That's one of the reasons it's not done yet is because there's been other things going on at OVA that have taken precedence from, you know, hotter items that needed to get done. But Brian has done, like I said, with the user interface and said that when we get back from Christmas, he probably will be able to show, like, an idea of what, you know, like, actually give a demonstration of some of the functionality. Really, he's waiting on me and Tony to sit down and catalog some of, like, really walk through, how do you check the limestone grate? What is the, I don't know the answer to that right now. I can't tell him to just put limestone grate in the software. And there's nothing, he's looked, he's looked out there to see if there's just stuff to pick from. It's not like there's a big database of how-to's either. So it's going to be kind of a long process. It's been an exceptional learning process for me and for all of us as we go through it, because Tony's been doing a lot of this on his own, and he's like our unsung hero here. We're learning how to do all the things that his department's been doing, so.
Great. And hear me, I'm not opposed to creating your own database, but living in that world, I also know what it's like five years from now when you need to update it or change it, where it's not giving you updates every two years because of software. It's not giving you updates because of, you know, computer enhancements. And so something this massive to be recreated five years from now would be a shame. I mean, I'm just worried about that. I mean, contract with this guy for the next 15 years.
And just something I want to add, sometimes when you buy these packaged programs, you spend so much and so much time customizing it, and it never gets to where you want. So there's the other side of that, where we're fortunate enough to have the talent in-house and the ability to create something that we need that'll be functional for our district. So sometimes it's hard to find that packaged, you know, software that will fit our needs.
No, I agree. I agree. And there's customization, you're doing 100% customization versus 25% customization. The point is, five years from now, which one can get you where you need to get? That's what I'm worried about, because I've lived in this world.
Right. No, and I understand that. And a big piece of this is that we're, a lot of it, like Jill was saying, we're in essence, spreadsheeting a lot of procedural stuff that has to happen. That's always good to have. And then we're going to take that and make that custom to certain things in there. And I think that's what makes it real special for us. So I don't think the front end of it will go bad, but we'll, you know, we're going to work on that.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So we've talked about the logical side of the database, but let's talk infrastructure for a second. Where, can anybody tell me where the server is located? What kind of protection we've got on it? If the server goes down, who's notified? How does it come back up? That type of thing?
Tim's up to it, too.
We'll come back when this gets more towards completion, and I think we'll share all those technical details.
Okay.
Mary?
I have a question about the safety side of it. I didn't have a chance to read the whole thing in my packet to look over it. How do we handle situations for the groups that are here after school hours, like robotics that may be all parent-led, who don't know anything about Alice, who don't know anything about any of that, but they still have students that they're the different buildings with? And situations could still come up. Do we address any of that in groups like?
The EOP itself doesn't differentiate between before or after school hours, things like that, but I think that that's why we invested in Jeff Board, and that's a conversation that has been started already about after school at our last safety meeting. That was a hot topic at the session.
We spent, the robotics team spends a lot of time here, January through April, as well as in some of the other schools. And when you've got parent volunteers, you might not have a staff person in the room, so it'd be really helpful.
That's fair. And, you know, we're not unique. There's every public school district in the state of Michigan, probably in the country, is in a similar situation to what we're in. Our buildings are open, it seems like endlessly, and they're more of a community center rather than just a school. And so I believe that all districts, I won't use the word struggle, but it's a challenge to try to address after-hours activities. I won't say that it's not a priority, it is a priority, but a higher priority, truthfully, is that of the day, the school day.
Correct.
But we are thinking of it. We're not putting it aside. We're just not there.
Thank you, Sam. Cory?
What kind of safeguards are, plan do we have in place? I mean, if this Brian is, the brains behind all of it, what kind of safeguards do we have that, he's not going to get recruited by Legorian or Bloomfield, and then we're starting all over? Do we have a secondary person that's there or a long-term plan that, we're not going to run into that with?
Yeah, so that's been a conversation I've had with Brian personally and with HR, and we talked about how to make sure that it's our intellectual property. It's going to be hosted on our server. It's going to be our property. And Matt Sannala is very, very much a part, an integral part of the process, and will be familiar with the code and the things that are like higher graphics to me. Matt has access to that, and our tech department will have access to that. Once it's complete, it will be ours, and we're going to make sure that our people are onboarded to make sure that Brian, were to leave us at any time, we could still operate. Absolutely. That's been thought of and discussed lately, so thank you.
All right. Anything else for Jill? Thank you, Sam. Are you ready for us to move on to this motion?
I am, yes, please.
Would someone like to pick up the motion under C? The Barracuda? Yes, Dan.
Oh, we start with D.
What did I do? Oh, I'm sorry. B. Start with B, please, the emergency operations plan. Right down.
Move to approve the Oxford Community Schools' emergency operation plans as presented.
Is there support? Cory, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Barracuda messaging system. Motion? Please. Dan?
Move to approve Barracuda messaging archive system from Inacom TSG at the price of $48,868 as presented.
All right. Is there support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion for five school buses. By the way, can we ask how the electric school buses did this week? Just as a side comment?
They looked good in parade.
How'd we do?
They looked really good.
They, well, we were able to have them in parade on Saturday.
Yep.
We are, we have a few minor things that we're getting to do to the buses. The techs have pretty much done that. One last thing we've got to do is add reflective DRT tape around the side of the buses. And hopefully, we'll be ready for inspection, actual official state inspection, first of next week. We call our issue safety inspector, they're going to be inspected, and we'll be on the road shortly.
Fantastic.
Couple of more hurdles that we have to, that we have to jump through here. I don't know if you've ever passed the Transportation Department yet, but they are charging, and they, they're lit up, so it's like, we'll wait for those phone calls. It's just, it just proved that they are bug in and that they're charged.
Thank you for that update. Thank you. All right, how about this motion for five buses? Yes, Mary?
Move to approve the purchase of five buses from Midwest Transit at the total cost of $427,000, $427,760, to be purchased through the 2019-2020 general fund as presented.
Is there support? Chad, support, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Barna?
That is it for the evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Human Resources?
Yes, so as we discussed at our prior meeting about the wage reopeners that existed in all of our contracts due to the financial indicators, we were successful in negotiating those consistent with what we discussed with the board prior to, with all of our bargaining units, all of our associations. And so in your packet this evening, there are four letters of understanding, one represented for each of the four bargaining groups. They are all the same. We did reach consistent agreements with all of those groups. And then also, just to clarify, so we have motions there, but also to clarify, the payment that is outlined in all of those letters of understanding will also be issued for all unaffiliated employees as well. So that's OELC, Central Office, yeah, some members of OVA, OVA staff as well. Anyone I missed? Yeah, all our EPL employees, yep.
All right, very good. So you'll see that the motions are separated. There's four in a row. Let's deal them one at a time. Cory, you want to do the first one?
Sure.
Move to approve the letter of understanding between Oxford Community Schools and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1472 in settlement of a contract re opener for the 2021 school year as presented.
Support, Dan?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dan, you want to do the next one?
Move to approve the letter of understanding between Oxford Community Schools and the Oxford Administrators Association in settlement of the contract re opener for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
Support? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Chad, you want to do the next one?
Move to approve the letter of understanding between Oxford Community Schools and the Oxford Education Association in settlement of the contract re opener for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
Support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Mary, you want to do that last one?
Move to approve the letter of understanding between Oxford Community Schools and the Oxford Educational Support Personnel Association in settlement of the contract re opener for the 2020-2021 school year as presented.
Thank you. Is there support? Dan, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, sir?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Student Services?
A couple of months ago, you had to approve a parent advisory committee person for Oakland Schools. That family has left the district, so tonight, we have a new parent.
And how do you pronounce Brandy's last name?
She is hung in here all night.
You hung in?
Just for that, she has to get approved.
As soon as you're approved, you can leave, all right?
And you can grab a cookie.
Pronounce your last name, please.
The H is silent, it's German, so it's just Ellinger.
Ellinger.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Would someone like to make that? Dan?
Move to approve Brandy Ellinger to represent Oxford Community Schools on the Oakland Schools' Parent Advisory Committee.
Is there support? Cory, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read this one now or do it another?
Oh, we're going to do it another.
Okay.
Since we're that close. You have a bunch of policies that we need to go through. We don't have Heather here.
Playing the role of Heather is?
Okay. Move to approve the first reading of policy numbers. 1420, School Administrator Evaluation. 1615, Use of Tobacco by Administrators. 2265, Child Care Center Staff and Volunteers. 2414, Reproductive Health and Family Planning. 2418, Sex Education. 2628, State Aid Incentives. 3210, Staff Ethics. 3215, Use of Tobacco by Professional Staff. 3220, Professional Staff Evaluations. 4215, Use of Tobacco by Support Staff. 5230, Late Arrival and Early Dismissal. 5512, Use of Tobacco by Students. 6800, System of Accounting. 7300, Disposition of Real Property. 7440.03, Small Unmanned Aircraft Systems. 7434, Use of Tobacco on School Premises. 8462, Student Abuse and Neglect.
Is there support for this first reading of these policies? Chad, support? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? You're good? We're good? All right, unscheduled audience participation. If you're still here or awake. All right. So there's None Angel? Okay, very good. Scheduled activities listed there for you. Any clarification, sir? Anyone wishing to make a final board comment?
This week one, since this is our last of the year, just wish our staff a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, our students the same, and Central Office. Thank you for your work so far this year, and I look forward to the second half.
Any others? I simply would like to say that I love standing up here shaking hands, and I want to talk to the kid who has already got his sophomore year finished in college. I mean, my goodness. Wow. And I love the fact that when an administrator is forced to bring two or three kids up because there isn't one, I just, this is thrilling. This is really thrilling. You all ought to be very proud. So thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your hard work. Some things under other. First, just as the president to tell you that for some of you, this is your first year on the board, that every January, there is the reelection of officers. So in our first meeting in January, we will be talking about who's president, who's vice president, who's secretary, who's treasurer, and just want to make sure that you're aware of that, and that's on the docket. You're thinking about that between now and then. Secondly, former board member Jenny Guthrie. I'm going to be working to get the family, like a gift card for gas or food, Meyer or something like that. So if anybody wants to contribute to that, just see me, get ahold of me. And I want to make sure that, I mean, they're traveling to University of Michigan constantly, and just await for us to say, hey, we're thinking about you. All right? I don't think I have anything else under there. How about you, sir? Does that mean we can adjourn? Nope. Whoa, Dan. Oh, yeah, Dan. Yeah, they're waiting. She's sitting there going, you better, you better than something. I've been sitting here.
All right. Move to approve to give authority to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and board president to approve change orders over $50,000, but no more than $75,000 in construction equipment contracts within 48 hours of notification of need. Anything over $75,000 would require a presentation and authorization from the Board of Education.
Is there a second? Cory, second? Discussion? Chad?
Say verbiage about the presentation. Assistant superintendent, do we discuss body or business numbers?
I think, I think we would have assistant superintendent in the absence of Sam, there would be somebody to fall upon rather than just.
One person.
Dan, could you read it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Move to approve to give authority to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and board president to approve change orders over $50,000, but no more than $75,000 in construction equipment contracts within 48 hours of notification of need. Anything over $75,000 would require a presentation to the board and authorization from the Board of Education.
I have a question. It's not, that's not flowing for me. I thought that was what we just said about the 25 to 50. I thought after 50, it needed to come to the board.
So this would actually, this would actually, the way this is written, I think it would override the first one. override the first one.
Right.
I thought that the one that we wanted to work on, the second one, was that we don't want to get burned, that we want to know of anything over $50,000. Within 24 hours of them knowing it, we want to know, so that we can have a meeting and so that we can hear. Because you're giving us another $25,000 of playroom that, in a sense, the three of us can approve without your approval, but in the last motion, we said we needed approval over 50.
Well, I think the two would go side by side, but this allows, you know, on Friday afternoon, there's an emergency, we've got to get this done, that gives you that added authority.
And then we need to meet the first one, because it's, it indicates the first one, then. Which is why we even say 50 if you can go up to 75, because the first one included the board president.
This one is more, I guess the way that I interpreted it as being written is, this is encompassing the dollar value and also putting a time factor of 48 hours onto that dollar value. The previous one was just a dollar value.
Time's the one that's really important, I agree with you.
And I think we asked our folks, Tony, and he said 24 to 48 hours. I think it's 48 hours would be the long side of that.
The first $50,000, we don't have to get approval. Right? And then that's the first one.
But it says over $50,000.
Over 50, we have to get the approval, and that's the second motion.
And there's time.
Well, my understanding, I thought from our discussion, was that over $50,000, it has to come back to the board. We were giving the up to 50.
Right.
But over 50 had to come to the board, that's not what I hear in that.
But this is saying that it has to be done within 48 hours.
But it doesn't say it has to come back to the board if it's over 50, it just has to go to the board president.
So let's go back to the first, so we understand what the first said. The first said, Cory took us back to the original and said, they can spend $25,000. If it's over 25, they've got to pull the chairman of the board in that discussion so that a representative from the board is involved in anything from 25 to 50. What we want is a motion that is saying, hey, you realize now that this thing's going to be four times as expensive as we thought. Before any work gets done, before anything happens, we want to know within 48 hours of you knowing. It's not going to require a meeting. But we want, we want to know within 48 hours of you knowing, not six weeks later, after you've already done the work, which is what happened last time. Does that, that's what we really mean, and so how do we do it that way? That's what we're trying to imply, that if you all of a sudden go, ooh, boy, this big, then within 48 hours, we've been notified so that we can effectively have a meeting and move forward.
And if it's between the 15 and 75, there's no need for a full emergency meeting, the three of you can't care.
No, that's what I'm disagreeing with.
Right.
It's over 50, we need to have a meeting, that's a lot of money.
So you want to strike?
That was my understanding, I thought that was our discussion.
You're, so let me state it, see if you agree. What you're saying is if, if all of a sudden they realize it's going to be over 50, that we would want to be notified 48 hours from them knowing. So that we can have an appropriate meeting in a timely way to give them permission to do what they need to do. That would prevent retroactively knowing they did something. Is that, am I stating that right?
Yes.
That's exactly what we need.
Pardon me?
That's exactly what we need.
Yes.
To help keep things moving and give parameters of what you expect for notification, over $50,000, within 48 hours, we will let you know that we need this approval, we need this discussion.
So that was stated fairly, then?
Correct.
Okay.
And the first 48 gives us time to prepare the report and to give you the information that you need across.
Correct, to come into a meeting and say, right, and then get you rolling again.
Yep, exactly.
Sorry to interject.
So technically, we've moved and supported through this one, too.
So I'm in favor.
Right, so we have to go down.
All those in, all those in favor of the suggested motion, say aye. Those opposed? Nay. All right, that motion dies.
And like our, I'm going to need Dan's notes after this.
Yes.
They're all here.
So, so, so.
Dark, scary place, folks. I'm going to strike this.
Is it okay to put, I mean, since you're responsible, we can put IDS in the front of this motion, right?
Actually, it's Clark Construction that comes to you for those.
All right, so if Clark Construction realizes that something is going to exceed the $50,000 threshold, they've got 48 hours to get to us. So that we can hold an appropriate meeting to approve that, understand it, and keep the public believing that we're staying in touch. That's what we're trying to do, right? So somebody word that in a sentence or two. Got that, Angela? All right. If, if Clark Construction sees that we will exceed the $50,000 threshold, they must notify the school district. And the school board. Within 48 hours of their knowing, within their, we'll fix the grammar. So that we might have a knowledge-based, expedient meeting to understand and approve the necessities for those funds. Fair?
Yes, sir.
Someone want to make that motion? Can I just say? Tom made a motion. Is there a second? Chad, seconds? Discussion?
We're actually going to the discussion part, I don't know that that would probably be proper parliamentary procedure. I think I jotted it down.
Oh, then make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
If Clark Construction, I moved, if Clark Construction sees that we will exceed our $50,000 threshold, they must notify Oxford Community Schools and the Board of Education within 48 hours of their findings, so the board can approve the extra funds as presented by Clark Construction.
Is there a second? Chad, a second? Discussion?
We're still not saying that we have to have a meeting. We have to say that?
Oh, I think that implies, that implies, yeah, that implies that there must be a meeting because there's approval, right? So, so, yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else under other? It's a great day to be a Wildcat, this meeting is adjourned.